I'd like to call and order the September session of the Suffolk City School Board at this time and ask Natalie Williford if she'll come forward and offer the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Please stand.
(inaudible)
Please stand.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you Natalie. It's time, can we have certification of the closed meeting, please?
(inaudible) Virginia nineteen fifty as amended.
Oh move. If Board members will please vote using the podium in front of the voting machine in front of their places. Motion carried.
Have any public speakers on agenda items at this time, any public speakers on agenda items? Here and then, let's go to reports by the Superintendent.
Thank you and good evening. I'm going to call to the podium Ms. Beth Ann Bradshaw to share our good news report.
Good evening. Each month we take this opportunity to share with you and our viewers at home some of the excitement that happens in our schools each and every day and some of the achievements of both our students and our staff. Tonight we want to introduce you to several students, several teachers and a student who were sponsored by Northrop Grumman this summer to attend NASA's Space Camp. Dr. Katherine Walsh, our Supervisor of Science Instruction, will now share more information with you and introduce our guest.
Good evening, Dr. Dubrinsky, Mr. Copeland, Dr. Whitney and the School Board. I have the very distinct pleasure of introducing to you tonight some wonderful people who had a really very cool experience this summer of going to Space Camp. I don't know about you guys, but I really tried to figure out how I could get myself there. I have with us tonight from Northrop Grumman, Ms. Donna Cushing, who is our liaison, who's the one that brought the opportunity to us. I also have Natalie Williford, one of the students who went, who attends Forest Glen. I have Ms. Pamela Stark, who is a gifted resource teacher at John Yates. And next to her is Ms. Christina Poole, who teaches grade eight science at John Yates. Right now what I'm going to do is invite Natalie to the podium and to let you know some of the really cool things that she did.
Hello, I'm Natalie Williford. I'm an eighth grader at Forest Glen Middle School. And I'd like to thank Northrop Grumman for sending me to Space Camp and thank you all for having me. I was very excited to go to Space Camp because I have, I've always had an interest in math and science and I would like to be an engineer someday. So kids from all over the United States, Australia, England and China all got to go to Space Camp. When we got to Space Camp, we split into teams. My team was called Team Demost, which was named after one of Mars's moons. We had two simulated flight missions where there were simulators and we'd actually feel like we were flying in an actual spaceship. First we had the Shuttle Mission where I got to be the pilot. And the second one was the Orion Mission, which was based on the future of space exploration and I was in mission control for that. We also did some, we also got to try out some really cool trainers such as the MMU trainer, which was used to move astronauts around in outer space, but they don't use that anymore. We also did the multi-axis trainer, which many of you have probably seen, the one that spins around in circles. We also did a moon colonization project and at the end of the week, we had to present it to the other teams. We did a, got to go in a pool and build things in the water. We also got to build rockets, little model rockets and launch them. We made resistant shields out of tinfoil and a few other materials. We also got to tour around the museum, see a lot of interesting things. We also had the Space Bowl at the end of the week, which was like a Jeopardy type competition between the teams at Space Camp about space history. And we had a lot of great guest speakers that came to speak to us and kind of influenced us to be involved in the career with astronauts and working for NASA. And it was very nice. And, and thank you to Northrop Grumman for letting me have this great experience and I hope they send more kids to Space Camp. And thank you all for having me again. Thank you.
Any questions by Board members?
May I ask a question? Natalie, right?
Yes.
Well, what do you think is the most, would be the most difficult thing about being an astronaut after the things you were trying this summer?
Well, it depends on who you are, I guess. Physically, it's challenging physically and with, well, become an astronaut, you have to have a ma, at least a master's degree in some kind of science or engineering. And physically you have to be very healthy and fit, have to be a certain height to even be considered to be an astronaut.
Does that mean a height, like you have to be tall enough or not too tall?
Have to be in a certain range.
Uh huh.
I think it was five foot two to seven foot.
Seven foot, that's, that's a good range.
I don't know.
What about, what about having a strong stomach?
Oh yeah, you have to.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask a question. Were, were any astronauts there?
You repeat that?
Were any astronauts, actually astronauts, were, were any of them there at this camp?
Actually, I think there were two astronauts who did presentations for us.
Cause I was asking because I, I had been in the presence of a camp somewhat similar to that and, and the guy, an astronaut was James, I think it was Harris, Harris, Dr. Harris, who was the first black astronaut. And he was something like five eight.
Good range.
He fit the range. How did you like Huntsville, Alabama? Or should I say Hornsfield, Alabama? I used to live there.
It was very.
Not far from that big rock that you see.
It was pretty hot there.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. You enjoyed the Space Camp experience?
Yes, it was very fun.
Well, I just want to say we're very proud of you.
Thank you.
And I'm sure you represented us well. Okay?
Natalie, appreciate it.
Certainly appreciate it also Natalie.
Thank you.
And also special thanks to Northrop Grumman for partnering with us. We certainly appreciate the work that you all did to make that possible for us.
We actually did send four students, but as life sometimes throws curveballs, Suffolk Public Schools has lost three of these students either to a move to another city or to another state. They are represented up here and you can see them in your board packets in the pictures as well. But I wanted to give the teachers a couple of minutes each to let you know how this changed them and what they plan on doing for our students in Suffolk Public Schools because of their experiences. Ms. Poole and Ms. Stark.
Hello, I'm Ms. Poole, I'm eighth grade science teacher at John Yates Middle. It was a wonderful experience. We were able to work with teachers across the United States. I still speak with a lot of those teachers every day over email, Facebook. We plan together. We were even able to work with teachers from Australia as well as Great Britain. As Natalie mentioned, we did have an amazing adventure where we were able to do a lot of the simulators, pretend as though we were actually in outer space, wear the space suits and fly around in harnesses and do just amazing, amazing activities. But we were also able to work together with these teachers across the United States on STEM activities. And we were able to bring back many different resources from NASA to work in our classroom that we can share with younger grades, middle school, high school, mathematics, English, science, of course. It just endless opportunities.
For six days we became the students.
Yes.
This is what we look like.
Yes. All day, every day.
Backpack, my handy rocket that I built, I passed through security.
Mine's in my classroom.
I run through quickly. But the great thing that Northrop Grumman gave us as a gift was all the resources. This backpack isn't, I, we had to buy another suitcase.
I had to pay an extra amount to carry home all of my supplies that I was more than happy to.
Which Suffolk rate certainly supports us, but we can never get the type of resources that we were able to acquire all over the world.
Yes.
That they brought their jump drives and then we took lessons from them, they took lessons from us, aside from lessons from NASA. It was just amazing. And then at in servicing, this, this year, Ms. Carey allowed us in his, the lessons that we saw at NASA and we used them and did cross-curricular stream. So STEM, by the way, is gone. Now it's STEAM and STREAM that's taking the place. So it's incorporating reading in the arts and budget lessons where kids have to do planning and, you know, all different types of project-based and.
It's a lot like UBD planning for teachers where they have to start and think with the final product and work.
Work their way back.
Work their way backwards. This is what you're going to end up with. How do I get from point A to point B to the end?
And even though it was presented to us in a science context, it didn't matter. We took that and I took it from a humanities standpoint and put it into a progressive era lesson plan because I know that with our SOLs, that's one of the lowest scoring areas. So it was amazing to take that skill and that information and be able to bring it back here for us and the kids. Ms. Poole and I put together a video and I know your time's really valuable and we're running short, so we will email you the link. But to see them and their faces and what they were able to represent Suffolk in this magnitude, it was beautiful. They represented our city so well. Public speaking. There was a Marine general who gave the closing remarks at their graduation and he pulled one of our students onstage and stood next to him and said that this student was from Virginia and that she is why we are here, that this is the future of engineering. I mean, this is our kid.
Wonderful.
So there's what.
And I really want to let you know that Grumman actually originally offered us one teacher and two students, but I think because.
We look so good.
Suffolk is always very responsive and Northrop Grumman is such a valuable partner that I tried to offer Ms. Cushing anything that I can in order to have her want to come back more. So I know we haven't done this for two years. We had a year in between where we didn't have a Space Camp offering, but I'm hoping by this experience and our continued relationship with Grumman that maybe we'll be able to make this a yearly thing. So I want to thank Grumman myself and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the Superintendent's Report, you can see we have the Career and Technical Education Advisory Council Annual Report. I'm going to call to the podium, Ms., excuse me, Gail Bess, Coordinator of Career and Technical Education. Ms. Bess.
Dr. Dubrinsky Chairman, Mr. Copeland Vice Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Whitney, good evening. I am honored this evening to spend a few minutes to share with you the CTE Advisory Council's annual report of the accomplishments in our Career and Technical Education Program known as CTE. CTE is the largest instructional program with elective courses in high schools throughout Virginia and Suffolk Public Schools. High school credit courses are offered in fifteen of Virginia's career clusters and the courses are listed in the tri-fold brochure that is before you. In addition, middle school exploratory courses are offered in three career areas. The CTE Advisory Council meets monthly to share information on current business trends, technological demands and workplace requirements. Student events are planned that will foster student growth and help students connect what they learn in school with real-world applications, which are critical when they transition from high school to post-secondary education, military apprenticeship programs and/or employment whether full-time or part-time. The membership of the CTE Advisory Council is comprised of a vast array of representatives from businesses and industries to community colleges and retired community representatives who continue to have a vested interest in CTE. They give so much of their time and resources to partner with Suffolk Public Schools and specifically the CTE program. A special thanks to you for your support and for allowing the Advisory Council to be a vital part of our students' educational experience. The Advisory Council looks forward to the continued partnership. This past fall, the Tidewater Builders Association Homorama Event was held in Suffolk and it became a classroom for several students where students connected what they learned in school with real-world applications. Pictured are students using their hand drawing skills to sketch the outside of the homes. Students also toured the homes to learn more about the design and features of each house. Pictured are two students who are comparing their drawings to the actual layout of the A professional student conference was held in November for ninth graders. The conference is designed to introduce ninth grade students to the Suffolk and the Hampton Roads business community as well as enhance the students' knowledge of expectations in the workplace as they enter high school and begin to identify a career focus. Approximately one hundred and fifty students attended and eleven presenters representing the business and industries listed. Plans are already underway for the eighth student conference with the theme See Your Future began with the end in mind. This conference was co-sponsored by State Farm Insurance and the Hilton Garden Inn Suffolk Riverfront. The Non-Traditional Extravaganza is an event that is designed for 10th and 11th graders to encourage students to think outside of the box and not feel locked in a career because of their gender and/or ethnicity. Students had the opportunity to interact in small settings with twenty-nine employees in non-traditional careers who represented seventeen businesses and industries. Non-traditional refers to occupations or fields of work for which individuals from one gender comprise less than twenty-five percent of the workforce. Career Expo, which is in its twenty-fifth year, provided an opportunity for students who completed CTE programs to meet face-to-face with business representatives for one last opportunity to sharpen their interviewing skills before graduating from high school. Forty-one business representatives conducted five hundred and three student interviews. Though employment is not the purpose of the event, several students were offered follow-up interviews for employment. Employers shared that the students were impressive and adequately prepared for their interviews. Participation from business and industry increases each year as a result of the participants sharing their experiences and encouraging other business representatives to participate. To conclude the school year, the CTE Advisory Council recognizes teacher and student excellence. Alkana Wafula, a two thousand and fifteen graduate of Lakeland High School, was selected as the CTE Student of the Year. Alkana was active in the Agriculture Program at Lakeland. State Farm Insurance co-sponsored this award with a monetary gift to the student. We were proud to recognize Mr. Jason Bartholomew, Business and Information Technology Teacher at Nansford River High School, as the Outstanding New CTE Teacher of the Year. Mr. Bartholomew joined our CTE team in two thousand and twelve. We were also proud to recognize Mrs. Renee Townsend, Business and Information Technology Teacher at Kingsport High School, as the Outstanding CTE Teacher of the Year. In addition to the student events and recognition of student and teacher excellence, students also have opportunities to certify in specific skill sets based on industry and business standards by passing one or more industry certification exams. An industry certification exam is an approved Virginia Department of Education Industry Exam, licensor or occupational competency assessment that is based on business and industry standards and achieved by students. Last year, students earned a total of one thousand four hundred and forty-four industry credentials with approximately eighty percent of those students earning more than one credential. In closing, the CTE Advisory Council would like to acknowledge the achievements of Raluka Rilia from John Yates Middle School who attended the TSA National Conference, June the twenty-eighth through July the second, at the Gaylord Texan Resort and Convention Center in Grapevine, Texas, which is in the Dallas metropolitan area. She competed with students across the country and she walked away with three awards. Second place in electrical applications, fifth place in communication challenge event, and tenth place in digital photography. Congratulations to Raluka and her TSA advisor, Mr. Alton Christmas. At this time, I would like to introduce to you Mrs. Courtney Thompson, Catering Manager at the Hilton Garden Inn Suffolk Riverfront, a Kingsport High School graduate, and she is the Chairman of the CTE Advisory Council. Mrs. Thompson.
On behalf of the CTE Advisory Council, thank you for the opportunity to serve Suffolk Public Schools. We are excited about this upcoming school year and the various student events that we will be planning for high school students. As Chairman, I would also like the opportunity to personally thank the Advisory Council members who meet monthly. Their diligent work in planning activities will help students connect what they learn in school to industry standards and expectations. Many of our members have had a full day in the workplace and were unable to attend tonight's meeting. However, I would like to recognize those members who were able to attend by having them stand at this time. Do we have any? Thank you. Again, thank you and we look forward to continuing the partner with Suffolk Public Schools in a proactive way. We're very excited to be involved and looking forward to great things to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bess.
Are there any questions?
Any questions by Board members?
Just a comment. I attended several of those events at the Hilton. Those events are just wonderful and I know they've been ongoing and the planning takes a lot of energy and staff should be commended for those things, all involved in the Advisory Council because those opportunities are really what is important for our young people.
Thank you, and we'll share that with the Council at our next meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes.
Lady here who won the prizes at the national?
But she is not here tonight.
Did you invite her next month?
Yeah, I will.
Will you bring her with you?
I will.
Thank you.
Okay.
Dr. Whitney, knowing how important these vocational, technical classes are, could you present us with all the things that we're doing to promote our students' entrance into either the workforce or the college next, next month at our?
Would you like that as a work session?
As a work session, yeah.
That'd be great, yes. We can certainly do that.
We need to make sure everybody knows that welding, plumbing and electric, electrical work are not, not shabby businesses to be involved with.
Next on the agenda for Superintendent's Report, we have the Special Education Advisory Council. I'm going to call to the podium, Ms. Dr. Antoine Hickman, our Director of Special Education.
Good evening, Dr. Dubrinsky, Vice Chair Copeland, Dr. Whitney, Board Members. I have the pleasure of presenting to you Ms. Vivian Evatt, Chairperson for, for our local SEAC. The SEAC Committee has worked tirelessly over this year assisting and just providing direction and input in the needs of our students with, with special needs along the community. Tirelessly is what they provide us with. I mean, the contact, the just verbal, the communication, those things have been very helpful to our department. Under Ms. Evatt's leadership, her team really communicates with us and we have a great working relationship this year, which has really grown and is really, oh stranger to this group. She'll be presenting to you the goals from last year, the objectives, the organization, and then presenting some of the accomplishments of that committee for the current, for two thousand fourteen, fifteen. And then we'll be, be presenting the persons who are nominated for the committee for next year. So without any further hesitation, I give you Ms. Evatt.
This begins on page thirty-one in your handbook.
Good evening. A state mandated, the purpose of our committee is to advise Suffolk Public Schools on needs in the education of children with disabilities, to participate in the development of priorities and strategies for meeting identified needs, to submit periodic reports and recommendations regarding the education of children with disabilities, to assist Suffolk Public Schools in interpreting plans to the community for meeting special needs of children with disabilities for educational services, to review the policies and procedures for the provision of special education and related services, and to participate in the review of Suffolk Public Schools' annual plan. The majority of our voting membership consists of parents of students with disabilities currently receiving services in our division. We have one teacher voting member, some of the members of our, of our, of our membership. Some of our members are community service providers, thank you. Our consultants include the Director and Supervisors of Special Education, the Parent Resource Center Representative, and a School Board Liaison. We hope to have a student rep in the future. Our committee is governed by bylaws that last revised December two thousand nine. Subcommittees are assigned as needed to address goals of SEAC. And the purpose of our subcommittees include to review policy manuals and proposed budget, to advise Special Education Department of Technology needs, to interpret the impact of SOLs on students with disabilities, to monitor the transportation needs of students. Sorry, did I, oops. This is my first time using this, please bear with me.
That's all right.
I mean, I know how to do one, I just, you know, can't read. I can't do two things at once. I'm sorry. Okay. To monitor the transportation needs of students with disabilities, to improve the communication between schools and parents. Our subcommittees include disability awareness, transportation special, transition, disability policies, technology, data assessments, nominations, and local special education annual plan review. We meet on the third Wednesday bimonthly, six times a year. Our subcommittees meet as needed. Our meetings are open to the public. They are advertised in community publications. We meet at Kingsport Middle School at six thirty PM. A period of time is allotted for public comment and subsequent review during each scheduled meeting of the full committee. However, no public comment was made this year. Some of our accom, accomplishments. The Disability Awareness Subcommittee is tasked with raising public awareness, providing parents with an understanding of the functions of SEAC, conducting public disability awareness training, and working with representatives from each school to provide awareness activities, especially during Disability History and Awareness Month in October. This year, our committee co-sponsored the Disability Awareness and Resources Fair at Nansford River. at Nansman River High School. The fair provided resources to parents from school and community sources. Committee members and volunteers operated disability simulation centers. These were fun and engaging activities that simulate the effects of different disabilities. These centers included wheelchair slalom with reacher, and that simulated fine and gross motor issues, a video game play with distorted glasses which simulated visual issues, mirror writing for visual and learning issues, impaired reading challenges for visual learning and comprehension issues, puzzles with distorted glasses for visual and spatial dysfunction, and breaking code challenges for learning issues. We also played the disability myth game to challenge disability awareness of our attendees. At the wheelchair slalom, attendees were asked to navigate in and out of cones while in a wheelchair, use a reacher to pick up items and carry them back to the starting point. The gentleman on the right in the picture was our operator, my son Cody. He was quite thrilled to invite attendees to experience a little of his world. He challenged participants to consider how a physical impairment would impact their lives. Cody was very excited about this opportunity and hopes that he will get the chance to do it again soon. At the video game challenge, attendees were invited to wear distorted glasses and play a video game. The operator for that event was the second gentleman on the right in the picture, my son Sean. This activity was a big draw for the younger set. Sean encouraged participants to consider how a visual disability would affect their gameplay, as well as the rest of their daily activities. In the bottom-left picture, our operator Kelvin challenged Dr. Hickman to a competition. The goal was to trace a star while viewing their hands solely through a mirror. Although it sounds simple, this is actually quite difficult, as you have to move your hand in the opposite direction that your eyes are telling you to do. This activity simulates visual issues and learning challenges such as dyslexia. The bottom-right picture shows some of the teachers and students who volunteered to operate sim centers. Although fare attendance was low, the committee received positive feedback on the centers from both attendees and volunteers. The committee plans to provide simulation centers at future disability awareness resource fairs. In April, CAC co-sponsored the Little Feet Meet with Special Olympics of Virginia at Kingsport High School. The Little Feet Meet is an outcome of Project Unify, which uses sports to develop school communities where youth are agents of change, fostering respect, dignity, and advocacy for people with intellectual disabilities. SOVA provided all equipment and training for the event. All elementary school students receiving self-contained services in Suffolk Public Schools were included. These students were paired with typically developing peers to compete together to win awards and fun events. Student leaders from Kingsport High School ran the entire event. More than 200 students participated. With approval, this will become an annual event for all grade levels. State and local police performed the opening ceremony of carrying the torch. There were more than 12 different events, including track and field. Each student received an award for their participation. Special Olympics of Virginia provided the awards. There were about 25 student leaders selected by the principal at Kingsport High School to run the event. These teens did a great job encouraging each child to try their best and congratulating them for a job well done. The Technology Subcommittee monitors issues with current IEP software. This year, the committee recommended several improvements to the software, as well as the Special Education webpages. Our committee had a lengthy discussion this year concerning the new software option to print amended pages only. The committee stressed that this option should be a choice given to the parents and not a default of the software. Our Transition Subcommittee monitors secondary transition services. This year, they suggested a public awareness campaign to stress importance of beginning preparations before age 14. They recommended improvements to orientation programs for students receiving special education services and for communication between parents and schools during transition into new schools. Our Data and Assessment Subcommittee works with Suffolk Public Schools' Testing and Research Department to review testing data, annual measurable objectives, and their impact on the special education population. They review graduation and/or exit data, discuss the relationship between SOL assessments and graduation, and monitor accreditation issues. Communication Subcommittee focuses on improving communication between schools and parents, recommends providing listings of resources and/or classes and skills needed in each grade level to the parents. This year, they stressed the need to provide resources and communication for families with limited or no access to the internet or computers, and recommended the need for a parent resource newsletter. CAC leaders and the Director of Special Education attended training provided by the Parent Educational Advocacy Training Center and the VDOE this year. The day-long training provided a refresher course on the function and goals of effective CACs. Our CAC and the Special Education Department were commended for policies, procedures, and for our working relationship. At the training, we gained new ideas on improving the committee's visibility and shared information with other local CACs. We will continue to mentor other advisory committees in our region. With approval, the 2015-16 CACs will be Vivian Evett, parent, Chairperson; Saul Gudinez, parent, Vice Chair; Ann Dunn, parent, Secretary; Shamika Council, teacher; Felicia Hamilton, parent; Flena Harper, parent; Rebecca Shaw, WTCSB; and Mandy Terrell, parent. CAC will establish specific committee goals at an upcoming meeting. Those goals will be presented to the board for your approval. CAC will continue to focus on how the following impact students with disabilities: academic performance, graduation, diploma options, transition services, SOL test and alternate assessments, Transportation Special, disability awareness, disability harassment, physical restraint and seclusion, special education budget, special education parent resources. In closing, the committee would like to thank Leslie Schiefer, Regina Hall, Sharon Harris, Caitlin Jordan, and Therese Colongo for their service this year. Due to bylaw requirements, they will be unable to serve as voting members in the coming year. We would also like to thank the Superintendent and board members and the Special Education Department for their cooperation and assistance with our efforts this past year. We look forward to a new and productive year. Thank you. Next time, I'll do it a whole lot better, I promise.
Comments by board members?
Just a comment, Ms. Evett, I know you do an outstanding job, and so much extra that you go above and beyond for our students, and we really appreciate that, and all of your committee members, what they do for our students and our school system.
I think you did a great job.
I certainly want to thank you, Ms. Evett, also for all the work that you've done with this committee, and look forward to working with you more. All right, next on the agenda, you can see we have the Articulation Agreement between Paul D. Camp Community College and Suffolk Public Schools. You may recall during the retreat, I think one of you, or a few of you, asked that we share with you what we're doing to improve and enhance the program as far as our dual enrollment and the communication with Paul D. Camp. And we have Dr. Maria Lawson-Davenport to share that information with you. It's actually on page 40, I believe. Do we have the presentation? We do. Okay, all right.
Good evening, Dr. Dubrinsky, Vice Chairman Copeland, Dr. Whitney, and School Board Members. I'm going to present to you some information concerning the student services that are offered through our Articulation Agreement and some of the plans for this upcoming school year as far as our Articulation Agreement with Paul D. Camp. Some of the student services that are provided: we offer courses at the high school online and Paul D. Camp Community Campus. Students are allowed to take courses at any of these locations. They have the opportunity to obtain a general education certificate or degree through our Articulation Agreement while they are enrolled in high school classes. We also have career coaches that are provided by Paul D. Camp at each high school that are available to provide career coaching, information, transferability to colleges, and just general assistance with helping students plan for their future. Our students are also granted access to Paul D. Camp Community College's library, student resources, and materials. They are treated just like a regular community college student. They are allowed to go on campus and get student IDs and to use the library and whatever other materials they need. With our financial agreement, we have a 100% tuition reimbursement plan, which means Paul D. Camp does not charge our students tuition. However, Suffolk chooses to charge a $50 per semester per course enrollment fee, which allows us to cover our instructor fees, textbooks, transportation, and other things that we do to provide for the students in the building. To cover this cost, the Suffolk Education Foundation and Paul D. Camp offer financial assistance to our students through application processes and other means that students are able to apply for. The Community College also provides placement testing at no cost to all high school students at each high school in the spring. Any student is allowed to sign up, and there's no cost to them. They can take the placement test to see where they would place and which courses they are eligible to take in the summer or in the following fall. We also provide textbooks for all dual enrollment courses that our students are enrolled in. These are the courses that are offered at each high school through our system. The textbooks that we provide are the actual college textbooks, so they are the same textbooks that are provided to students who take the courses at the college. Our plans for 2015 and 16, we have now added links to each high school website directly to the Paul D. Camp Dual Enrollment Website, which has been updated. We also are assisting in the identification of Suffolk Public School teachers that have been credentialed to teach community college courses. At Nansman River High School this year, we are happy to offer a U.S. History course. We found a teacher that is actually a Suffolk Public Schools teacher who is credentialed to teach U.S. History at the community college level, so she will now have a course over there. We also now have a Paul D. Camp Dual Enrollment Coordinator who is available once a semester for student advising. She's scheduled to come in November to each high school. She provides the students with assistance as far as advising which courses they need to take for the degree plan, what their future plans are, and she's also an expert as far as academic advising at the college level, so she knows more about which courses they need depending upon which college they go to or what their future plans are. We're also excited this year that we will be providing transportation for the dual enrollment biology students to utilize the Paul D. Camp Labs at least twice this semester. They will be able to travel over there and utilize the college facilities, all of their materials as part of the dual enrollment program. We also have counselors who are identifying students who are pursuing certificate or degree programs. This is to help ensure that they are enrolling in the proper courses, so we're hoping that the counselors will begin to notify and look at these students as they plan this, because students actually choose to take this program on their own. They don't have to notify us that they are enrolled in this program. So making sure that we know who these students are is one of our areas of concern, so we're looking at that this year as well, and helping the counselors to identify those students early on as soon as they begin this plan. We've also identified one counselor at a point of contact at each building for students and parents so that we can have consistency in the information that's disseminated. Additionally, we are recommending to students that they visit Paul D. Camp Advisors for post-secondary options and transferability. At the high school level, we don't have information as far as the Articulation Agreements that Paul D. Camp shares with four-year universities, so we advise the students to go to the Paul D. Camp campus and to talk to their advisors so they can make sure that the courses that they are taking will be transferred to those four-year colleges. We also will recognize students at graduation who attain general education certificates or degrees. Since the program began, we have had 12 students who have attained either the certificate or the degree. Last year, we had nine, so our numbers are increasing each year. We will also this year provide parents and students with informational updates and reminders each semester, either via a newsletter or a flyer, and we'll provide those at the mid-quarter so they are aware of deadlines and dates for paying for the second semester, when their textbooks will be available, and what courses they need to sign up if they're planning on taking courses in the summer as well. We're also going to increase information available to parents about the dual enrollment program on the Suffolk Public Schools' website in each high school and during information sessions. We have the College and Career Readiness Fair coming up in November. This year, we will have a dedicated session presented by Paul D. Camp Community College Dual Enrollment Coordinator, and she will come and actually conduct the session and provide information for parents who are interested in looking at the program and want a little bit more. We also will have our annual AP and Dual Enrollment Night, which will provide information as well, and that will be held either in December or January. We will also continue to accept Paul D. Camp-approved courses that are taken outside of the high school for dual enrollment credit. One of the areas of concern is the communication as far as what constitutes a dual enrollment course. Our dual enrollment courses are courses that the students take at the high school level that we provide and they offer. We actually receive that money, and then we register the students through the high school. Students also take courses on their own in the summer or in the afternoon after they take their regular high school classes. We do accept those classes for credit as well, so just making sure that students understand that if they choose to take a history class in the summer, we will accept that course as well for their history credit towards their graduation requirements. And we will continue parent information sessions in the spring and in the summer as well for parents and students who are interested in the courses. Now I'd like to introduce you Dr. Tara Atkins-Brady, who is the, make sure I get her title correct. She is the Vice President for Academic and Student Development at Paul D. Camp Community College.
Thank you, Dr. Lawson-Davenport. Good evening, Dr. Whitney, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you so much for your partnership with Paul D. Camp Community College in regard to the dual enrollment program. We are very pleased to have you as a participant with us, and we're very pleased with the work that Dr. Lawson-Davenport has done in collaboration with Jeanette Pellegrin, who is our full-time dual enrollment coordinator. They've worked very closely over the last several months to bring about a number of positive changes and good progress in providing dual enrollment opportunities to your students.
Are there any questions?
Questions by board members?
Just a comment, this looks very promising. Yeah, it looks like we're heading in the right direction. I think these are things that have been needed for quite a lot of years.
I'd like to ask a question. What is the enrollment, the dual enrollment of our high schools? Are they increasing or decreasing?
Enrollment is actually increasing. Currently, we have, well, we don't have our current numbers. Students are still adding and dropping right now during this week, so we don't have our current numbers. However, within the last year, give me a second. In 2013-14, we had 82 total students enrolled. In 2014-15, we had 126 students enrolled, so our numbers are steadily increasing.
Thank you.
How soon can a student begin taking courses at Paul D. Camp? Ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade?
They can begin as early as the summer of their 10th grade year. There is an age requirement, but we do provide waivers based on the approval of the college president, the school principal. So if a student wanted to start earlier, they would have to go through a process. They would have to start that process very early in order to get approval in time to sign up for classes. But typically, if they're going for the degree plan, we do tell them that they need to begin the summer of their sophomore year.
Okay, that means before their sophomore year begins? The summer?
After their sophomore year.
After their sophomore year. Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to remind all parents that this is a very equitable way of paying for part of your college education. My daughter took several classes, and they were all accepted at Virginia Tech, saved us several thousand dollars, and I would encourage any parent that has a student going into their junior year to look into this program. Thank you very much.
Dr. Davenport, your process, and I know you are new with us, but the process of getting the information to our students, we were questioned just recently that a parent said that he felt that we did not do a very good job in getting it out to the parent. I don't know if you read it tonight, but we would like to have some idea as to how it is given to the students and the parents at an early beginning, if it's 16 or 17 years old, that they know what we're doing.
With the College and Career Readiness Fair and other events that Suffolk holds, we do have a Paul D. Camp representative present. Also, what we are providing is, in the buildings, they do advertise the placement testing. With Ms. Pellegrin coming into the buildings, we are encouraging all students, and that's one of the things, last year, we did begin this with her coming into the building once a semester. It worked very well. She had a lot of students that she was able to meet with, and this year, she'll be able to dedicate an entire day at each building, so students can sign up through guidance. So we'll be providing flyers for the students, sending that information home, starting as early as 9th grade, so that students who are in the 9th grade who want to start looking at that program will be able to come and talk to her and get some information and be able to share that information with their parents.
I misunderstood. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Did I misunderstand, or did you say that there's a counselor identified at each high school?
Yes, there is a counselor.
So there is a counselor on staff at each of the high schools to talk with, to interact with those students?
Correct, and we recently received an updated dual enrollment brochure from Paul D. Camp, which will be disseminated to all the guidance counselors, which will provide all the contact information for Paul D. Camp, which will have Ms. Pellegrin's information as well as contacts that they can get more information as well. And we'll be providing those to all of the guidance departments this year.
I think it's important that our guidance counselors as well make sure they're aware of this program as much as they can be, and to push it to our students, for our students who are going in this direction. Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's very important, is that the counselors not just be there to receive and react to questions, but that they be very proactive about it. That may make a very big difference.
I would agree. In fact-
In fact, when you look at the plan, you can see that it has some very strategic communication focus, because I think that's what's been lacking in the past, as far as making sure that community members and parents are aware that it's there, but also that guidance counselor perhaps tapping a student on the shoulder and saying, "This program might be for you," based on your performance, based on things of that nature. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
The fifth item on the superintendent's report is our student membership. As you well know, we...this is our third day of school. We're very pleased to say that we have on page 45, I believe, our student enrollment for each of our schools. We have a total of 14,178 students currently enrolled. We do anticipate that number increasing as the week progresses as well as throughout the month of September. That's a little shy of about 30 to 40 students last year. I don't anticipate that to be the case. I do think there will be some growth in pocketed areas throughout our city, but that's our enrollment. As you can take a look at it, it is listed for each of our schools.
Once again, John Yates has more students.
Yes.
Our high schools.
Yes, very, very large.
We've got more students there.
Yes.
Did you say that there...the enrollment at this moment is down by 30 students?
Thirty to 40 students, yes.
Okay.
Board members, if you look at the consent agenda at this time and see if anything needs to be moved to unfinished business, new business. Can I get a motion to accept?
A move that we accept the consent agenda.
Second. Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
New business, capital improvement plan from 2017 through 2026.
Yes, if you'll turn to page 46, I'm going to call to the podium Mr. Terry Napier, our Director of Plant and Facilities, to share with you what we have drafted as far as the capital improvement plan. Mr. Napier.
Good evening. Be right with you. Have a PowerPoint. Hopefully, that's coming our way. There it is. No, that's not it. As we do every year, we're going to share this year's version of the capital improvement plan. This is the same format that we've used in previous years. Just a reminder that the numbers in black type, those are your numbers that we submitted on your behalf. The red numbers are the city council's proposed numbers in their draft, CIP. All of the projects are listed on the left-hand column. The years beginning in 2016, 17, running through 2026 go left to right on the remainder of the chart. We are going to go down through the first six or seven items, as those are the ones that will occur in the next four to five years. And to be honest, anything beyond that four to five-year mark essentially is a place marked for future consideration, and we will let you look at that, and if you have any questions, we'll certainly address them, but what we're more interested in is the first four or five years. Project number one, HVAC replacement, chiller replacements. We had prior funding of...your proposed prior funding was $3,142,750. The city came back with $1 million. Certainly, there was discrepancy there, and you can see that all the way across through 2019, 2020. If you go all the way to the right project total column, what we are saying is that to complete all of the HVAC projects that are necessary at this time, it's just over $8 million. The city is proposing $4 million, so that's where we are with that project at this time.
Can we think that the new funding mechanism in place can help us out with that?
If we decide to go that direction, it could help a great deal with that, yes. And this may become a non-issue at some point for us, actually.
And while we did consider that, because this is our proposed plan, I felt more comfortable including it in the CIP right now until we have all the logistics worked out with the Performance Energy Plan.
When will we have that information available to us?
We're hoping that we'll be able to have...to move forward, well, we've already begun to move forward. As far as actually having the assessment done, that's...remember, there's a preliminary assessment that'll take place within the next few months, and then by perhaps December or January?
Perhaps.
Okay, December or January, we should be able to have something.
We should have the back of the envelope by December or January?
Yes, what Susan Redmond and I have done so far, we have contacted one of our local school divisions, our neighbors in Isle of Wight, actually, to see exactly how they went through their performance contracting process. They shared that with us. We wanted to make sure that the sequence in which we were doing things was correct, and it was...we had some questions about RFPs and those kinds of things. We have straightened all of that out. What we are waiting for now is for a representative from Department of Mines and Minerals to contact me so that we can get whatever direction they would have for us, and at that point, we will select vendors that are on the approved ESCO list from the Commonwealth of Virginia to do those back-of-the-envelope assessments.
We are in touch with Charlie Bockdahl or whomever from his department.
We made a call to him yesterday or Tuesday, and we're waiting for him to contact me back.
How many vendors do you plan to contact, do you think?
We're thinking at this point, five.
Five? That's a lot.
It's...it sounds like a lot, but the state requires a minimum of four.
Oh, okay.
So we thought...there was a fifth one that we wanted to speak to as well. The good part of this process is that we can choose from that list without going through any kind of procurement process, RFPs, that kind of thing. We can just select the five that we initially want to talk to, and we have actually done that. We haven't made that public yet until we get the information that we need from the state, but yes, we have done that.
You can see, that's why it's difficult to give a firm timeline until we have chosen someone and they've actually started the assessment.
And it could take several months for them to complete that, and then at that point, they'll come back to us, and we will look at those assessments. We will define our scope and sequence at that point, and then we would move forward from there with one of those ESCOs, if we decide to do that. Land purchase for multiple campus site northern end of the city. That was prior funding. That was $2 million. That's actually been done, so we're beyond that at this point. Any questions about that? Okay. A new middle school northern end of the city. As you can see, prior funding, 9.5 million. Second year there, 16, 17, it's 12.9 million. And then third year, your proposed amount is 9.1 million. If you look just below that, the red numbers, those are the numbers that city council are proposing. The first two numbers are the same. The difference is in that last number, theirs being 3.9 as compared to your 9.1. We are suggesting, if you look all the way over to the project total column, that that school is going to cost somewhere in the vicinity of 31.6 million. The city's proposing 26.4. What I think is going to happen with this is we're going to have to wait until that actually goes to bid before we know the exact number as far as how much that school's going to cost, but based on our consultations with our architects, we think that 31.6 number is much more accurate than the 26.4, and we think that's going to prove out.
That 31.6 number, including an 800-pupil high school?
It's middle.
Or middle, I'm sorry.
It's 650 pupils, and what we are proposing to do with that is initially design and put it out to bid as a 650-student school with an alternate price going to 800, adding the additional 150 going to 800 so that we have both numbers.
Why don't we go with 800 in the beginning?
We actually did. In fact, it was actually more than 800. If that's the desire of the board and put 800 up here now...
I would think we need to go with 800. Why go 650?
It was a funding consideration at that point.
I know, but if we're going to build something, we need to look at the future and the present. The present with the way construction is going on and what I'm hearing about in northern section of northern geographical area.
I would agree with you. It definitely needs to be...we see the need for 800 students. In fact, you may recall, we had said initially even larger. When the city shared that they were willing to give us the...or build the elementary in middle, in a sense, the compromise was the 650 and the elementary. But the need is definitely there, so this is definitely the time to put 800.
Did they also agree not to build anymore in the north so that you'd only need 650?
Well, with the 12,000...the 1,200-student population over there, Yates rate now...
That's all right.
That's larger than even Lake...
Lakeland High School.
It would be wise on our part to couple it with 650. I mean, if we're going to build something, you need to build it for the present as well as the future.
I can tell you that our architectural firm is looking at both footprints.
800, I wouldn't...I wouldn't even look at a 650.
Would you put that in the form of a motion?
If I'm asked to.
Sure, you can change that. Or if you'd like, we can change it now, and then when you vote on the entire plan, we will accept it as such.
And I have a question. I know that at the work session, we talked about having a school that was...we would be able to expand if the funds were available.
Yes, either plan...
Please explain to me the...
Either plan has a core built for 800 students. If it went and we ended up with a 650-student school initially, the core is being built for 800 so that it could be expanded at some point. Yes. Yes.
Need to put it in all this first, where you're doing it.
I think, you know, an 800-pupil school with expansion past 800 is feasible.
We're not sure that's possible on the site that we have. 800 maybe as large as we can go.
Well, we need as many as we can get.
So we can...
We'll wait till...
As is this materials management, this is a HARA, being asbestos mold, those kinds of things. You have requested 75,000 every year. The city council has also put 75,000 in there. I'm not sure why it ended in 2020 and then jumped to 300 in 2024, but essentially, that comes out to the same amount of money as what you're asking for.
So all the years that are in between?
I don't know why that's like that from now.
No numbers, nothing, and then 300,000.
That's odd.
Yeah, looks different.
Yeah.
When the city does their vote, they do not specify...
Okay.
They swap it all together, so we arbitrarily pick a year and put it there.
Okay.
They don't tell us when.
Okay.
They're assuming they're going to be the same thing.
Every year. Okay.
I noticed we don't have any proposed new buildings for the section of King's Fork in that area there. Now, that's where the next growth spurt is going to come in the city down Route 10. In fact, I think they already have four different housing developments that they have on the books, two of which are in...two or three of which are already in phase. Should we not think about putting something in there? King's Fork is going to be overburdened in the next three or four years, I think, for middle.
That's certainly something that we could look at. The King's Fork area has not been our focus, given what we have in the northern end of the city at this time.
I know that, I know, but we're addressing those needs. I think we need to be preemptive in the next set of schools and make sure that we're ready to go when the population hits. That's what I'm saying. I know that one...two developments off of Pitchcuddle Road are already in progress. One is already full. They've already sold all the homes on the right side of the road. They're building the next section on the left side of the road, right by the overpass over there, and they've got a big plot of land off of King's Fork Road, is it Butler Drive?
And we certainly can add in the future if we needed to. Keep in mind, this is a document that's funded yearly, and we have to go back and change this every year, so we'll be doing this again next year, and what we currently have in there, we can certainly shift around. We can add new projects as we see fit, so we have the ability to do that.
Do you know if any of those developers have provided as part of their building, provided land? Land so that we can build?
One has it because it's real...it's only about 80 houses, but there's one now that's being really developed, has several hundred houses on it. That's a good question. I don't know if there's a profit for that or not.
I think that's something that I don't know who we need to talk to, the zoning folks or whatever, but it ought to be whenever people build these developments, something needs to be in there, because we know if they're building a development like the ones that I live in, the northern end of the city, to allow for schools. It just doesn't make any sense to build that many homes and then don't think any children will live there. So whenever it's negotiated, I don't know if it's the city manager or who is responsible for that, but I really think that that's something to consider, and that is something we need to take back to our committee, too, as a recommendation.
And the other advantage to their doing that is that it allows us immediately a neighborhood school and a mixed community. It's already there.
Already there.
Yeah.
I can have some conversation with the city manager about that if the board desires. As far as looking at King's Fork, just as Mr. Napier said, it might be wise, because of the two schools that we're building, as we come back to you, 2016, 17, by then, we will have some...perhaps some solid numbers of the developments that are online or that have already been established in the King's Fork area and have that...see if that's the next priority area.
I do...I do think that there is going to be a response from the city council, though they are going to say, "Well, our population hasn't grown."
School population.
No, but I'm just...that's interesting that there's this growth there, but the school population hasn't grown yet, well, yet.
Because it's targeted in one area. We know that the north...northern end is where the growth is right now, and as we look at the...obviously, when we build a new school, we have to look at some type of rezoning. How expensive that might be depends on when we start looking at numbers and where we're going to move children from.
And the other thing I think is if we look at the numbers of the schools that are there, John Yates' population has grown. Northern Shore's population looks like it. I don't remember the numbers exactly, but it looks like it's grown as well, and I don't know about Creekside. I'm not sure of the numbers there, but I think that it's critical for us to look at the fact that while some other schools have not grown, these schools have grown, the neighborhoods have grown as we build, but we're closing schools in some areas as well. So even though those numbers that reflect less than 30 students at this time of the year with people moving in and out, as a former military wife, active-duty military wife, now retired, we were always moving in and out, and of course, the military doesn't have any regard for what month of the year they do it. So there may be, depending on whatever the moves are, I don't think this 30 number is a reflection of the city getting smaller, but just a space that hasn't been filled yet. Yeah, I understand.
Possible reaction.
I understand. Oh, I'm sure.
Any other questions about the elementary school? Moving on, project number five, operations facility. This is...we've talked to you about this in the past. This is the renovation of the former Mount Zion school site, which would include placing print shop, the textbook operation, food services, maintenance, all of those departments on that one facility. We did have a conceptual study done by RRMM architects several years ago. They brought back some ideas. It was a doable plan at that time. Currently, we were looking at about $9.8 million to convert that school into an operations center site with a warehouse. That number is still in there. It has been pushed back every year since I've been doing this. Currently, your number is in the 18, 19 year. The city has pushed that to 2020, 21, and they have come back at 9.2 million, and that's assuming that we would use the Mount Zion site.
This is...oh, I'm sorry. This is, oh, I'm sorry. This is the third year since I've been on the board. And the very first year, we met with the city to talk about some facilities. If they wanted that facility, then to give us some space that we could use that would be reasonable for us to use this, to turn over this facility so that the city could do whatever. Please tell me where we are in those discussions. Has anybody mentioned anything to you with regard to what their plans are in some joint use space?
I can share. The last conversation, actually, with the former city administration was that the focus was going to be, and rightfully so, on the two northern schools versus the operations center. And I certainly understand that. But the idea of giving them that land versus another facility or another land to build something was still something that we were willing to do. Because my position, and I think you all have shared, that's fine to do as long as we get the operations center. If we give up Mount Zion, and that's where we are with it. We've not had any further discussion regarding that.
Project number six, John F. Kennedy Middle School renovation, year 1718. We are proposing 1.5 million, followed up in 1819 with 18 million. The city's proposal is 19.5 million in 202122. And that would be to renovate the current John F. Kennedy Middle School. It is our plan to close Driver Elementary and Florence Bowser Elementary the year that the new elementary school and the new middle schools open. So those would go off of our inventory and become whatever the city chooses to do with them at that point. Project seven, Forest Glen Middle School, 10.9 million. We proposed that in 1819. The city has proposed it in 20232024. So at this point, every project listed below number seven has been pushed out so far that it's really, those numbers, we don't know if those numbers will be good at that point or not. They're placeholder numbers at this point.
And I think, as I've said, when we present this next year, that's when we're going to have to, the board will need to make a decision whether we're moving in the direction of renovating an existing school in one particular area versus do we see a priority need in central Suffolk, which we talked about, the King's Fork area. But again, I think it's a matter of looking at the numbers, looking at the projections and so forth as well. This is the CIP. The only change to this would be to, as far as the recommendation would be, to change the 800 or the 650 pupil school to 800, which would alter the project total. And we would have to either share that with you or we can do an estimate. You can approve it now and do an estimate with the adjusted total.
Moved that we approved the 800 pupil school.
Is that including the entire CIP with the change?
Yes, with the entire CIP, yes.
Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Napier.
How do I make it go away?
If any public speakers on non-agenda items that wish to come forward and speak at this time, any public speakers, any public speakers out there on non-agenda items that may want to come forward at this time? We'll go to members, but business by board members. Start with Ms. Skeeter.
For observation, I'd like to compliment the math division of last year in our public schools. As we know, we were all worried about our math scores, and they were down, and we were hiring folk, and if we could get folk who could come in and work with us and improve our students' SOL scores in math. If you noted in the newspaper or at our convocation, our math increased. So we need to congratulate that part of the staff that worked hard to get the score, the scores where they are. We may not be right there, but we're almost there. We're knocking on the door. It's coming open. And the next thing is that we went to Booker T. David and I for its luncheon. And we really want to thank Mr. The Vice Mayor, Bennett was the chef. He cooked the fish, and I don't know who was fixing the rest of it. And then all of a sudden, his assistant came out, former police chief Freeman. So he said he was tired, so I assume he was helping with the food. But it was a nice day, a nice luncheon. Teachers were excited. They didn't sit around. Normally, you eat and you relax and you just sit around. But they were in a hurry to get back to the classrooms to do what they could do by the end of the day. And of course, convocation was just great. We'll just leave it at that. And we look forward to a year much better than last year. We do it every year. We get a little better each time. So we want to welcome all of you back that's on our staff. And of course, you already know, you have the Suffolk Public School Board here to assist you in any way that we can. So thank you.
I just want to say thank you to the staff and the faculty here that we work with. I am extremely proud of all of you. And I noticed one thing that I'd like to say. I didn't get a chance to say when they were here, so I hope somebody tells them. The two science teachers who went to space camp were enthusiastic. They were excited about what they were doing, and I'm sure it makes a difference in the classroom. So I just want to say, tell them to please thank you so much for what you're doing and for what you continue to do.
Couple of things. We had a lot of summer programs going on this year, of course, and the public's been made aware of those, thank goodness, through many good articles in our local newspapers and on our website and so forth. But I want to say a special thank you to all the administrators and teachers who really made all of those things come to life and put so much hard work and dedication into those programs. I think it's going to benefit us in this coming year. We've seen a lot of those things already are taking off maybe for next year. I think we've had a good opening, and that's due to preparation and I think continued concerns with items will help us even move in a better position as we move along. And one thing, I hope that in the future, when we have a convocation, that Dr. Whitney will work on those dance moves. And I know everyone will chip in a couple of dollars if he wants to go and take a few lessons. But I do admire him for stepping up to the plate, and his dressed-down approach was most appropriate.
What was he wearing?
And he was dressed very nicely, and his dance moves were great. And I appreciate all of that, and I know all of you do, too.
I was out west. I wish I had seen that.
Just to sit on YouTube.
Oh, I wanted to go to YouTube and look at that. But since I don't have anything to report, I do want to wish good luck to our new transportation director. And I really hope that this, our busing situation is going to be, is going to make everybody happy this year. I know it's going to be very difficult, but good luck for that. I meant that sincerely. That wasn't sarcastic. I hope it goes well.
The chair, I liked, I don't know whether, I read it, Dr. Whitney, but I'd like to commend, compliment Lakeland High School for an outstanding job for the guidance department, I guess that's who I'll compliment, for the scholarships that they inquired, received, the students received this graduation. I think in your book, in our book really, it says something about 6 million, then one in school, 6 million, it says, but the actual figure was 3 million. Am I right, correct?
Yes, I do think the 6 million was an error.
Okay, well, that's what I was thinking, that Lakeland had the smallest enrollment and without any of these outstanding programs, I mean, the STEM programs at these other schools. So you know you're going to have the outstanding students, the academic students in those schools. But despite that, they still led, had more money available. So somebody doing a good job at their school. And I like to compliment and to thank them for the job they are doing. And hopefully, they will continue, as well as the other schools, will sort of pep up a little bit and do a better job, too. Because the monies are very valuable for our students. And listening at the chair was stating about doing enrollment, about his daughter getting, being compensated for the courses that she took in high school that benefited her in college. We need all the, I know these parents need all the money they can get. And listening at how much money students owe after they graduate, that was unknown when I graduated. But anyway, this, today is a different day. So we like to compliment and to thank all of the schools for what they do. But special thanks to Lakeland High School for still, for the dissicking in a row they have led in scholarship funds to my, I think to my recollection. If I'm incorrect, I stand to be corrected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. I'd like to welcome back Mr. David Mitnick, our board member, who has been ill. He came to the work session and to the subsequent meeting, but was unable to stay for this meeting. But he'll be back full force hopefully next month. I'd also like to congratulate Dr. Whitney and the central office staff for putting on such an outstanding convocation. I wish I could have been there. Unfortunately, I had a meeting with the emergency room and was there from like 8 o'clock Sunday morning to 2 o'clock Monday and was unable to attend. Thank you, Ms. Barron, for stepping in and giving our convocation address on behalf of the board members. And.
Very great. She did a great job.
Yes, she had a good job.
Thank you. Very much. Okay, and yes, Dr. Whitney can be seen on YouTube, and you can check out the fancy steps. I'll tell you what, the guy next to him showed him up a little bit, but he was in there. You gotta go on, just go on YouTube and type it in. We'll go to the closed meeting.
Let me say, we are going to invite each board member to join the dance next year, but.
No, thank you.
He wouldn't want to show you off.
During convocation, I did have an oversight where I did not mention Forest Glen Middle School for their 20% growth, I think, in seventh grade English, and I wanted to do that publicly. It was just an oversight. In addition to Turlington Woods, we do know the importance of that school as far as helping our students find success and be able to get back into the general or the comprehensive schools. So I do want to publicly thank them and their staffs for all of the work that they have done throughout the year as well. We work as a team here. I do feel like convocation went well. The staff, I felt that they were energized. I was fortunate enough to visit all 20 schools over the last two days, and I feel very proud of what I see. Teachers have already begun teaching. Students have begun learning. So we say to our parents and to the community, thank you for your support. We have 177 days to go. We look forward to each of those days and would ask you to continue to support us. Thank you.
Board members, if you'd turn your attention to informational items at this time. Take a few. Questions? Okay, let's go to action in the closed meeting, the personnel report, Mr. Copeland.
Ms. Chair, I moved that student appeal 15/16-3 be denied.
No, we're on personnel report.
Personnel? Oh, I'm sorry. I moved that, Ms. Chair, I moved that the personnel report be received.
Second. Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Pupil personnel report.
Chair, I moved that student appeal. Personnel report.
The pupil personnel.
Personnel report. I thought we just approved that. Personnel report.
Now it's the pupil personnel.
Pupil personnel report, okay. Ms. Chair, I moved that pupil personnel report be received.
Second. Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Student appeal 1516-3.
Ms. Chair, I moved that student appeal 15/16-3 be denied.
Second. Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Student appeal 1516-4.
Ms. Chair, I moved that 15/16-4 be denied.
Second. Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
This time, if further business can be for the school board, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight.